Needing to order, at this time I would ask Vice Chairman Mike Barbie to have her implication and her pledge.
My Father, we've done to you procedures for guidance. We teach us, Lord, not to depend wholly on our own thoughts and opinions. We ask for your wisdom and guidance to do the right thing at the right time. Lord, help us with the movement and choose the right way for all of Stanley County. We bless all of Stanley County and the workers. Help them to do the work that we need to do, make it commonplace. We bless our teachers and staff, please fire their rescue, and our military men and women who receive or wherever and help them to return home safely. In his name, my Father.
I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Barbie. At this time I would entertain approval or adjustments to the agenda.
I'd like to add to the agenda that we talk about County Manager Lucas's salary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see if we could remove item seven, I believe it is, for the JCPC. All right, remove item seven. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
I got a motion, Commissioner Crump, Second Commissioner, Vice Chairman Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you all. Public comment, we had no one to sign up for a public comment. Are there anyone out there that would like to speak? All right, thank you very much, we'll move on. Our first item is reappointment to the Senior Services Advisory Board, and our presenter is Ms. Pamela Sullivan. Good evening Pamela, how are you?
Good evening Chairman Ebert, how are you?
Good.
Hello Commissioners, Happy New Year. I'm here on behalf of the Senior Services Department and the Senior Services Advisory Board. We have three members whose terms have expired. Two of them are Dolores Chambers and Brenda Spencer, and both of those wish to be reappointed for another three-year term. The third board member is Mr. Rigsby, and he is ineligible for reappointment even though he did say he was interested in that, but he also serves on the Sewer and Water Board. So the remaining board members will make recommendations for the other two to three members that need to be appointed as well at the next meeting. So for tonight, we request that Dolores Chambers and Brenda Spencer be reappointed to the advisory board.
All right. Y'all want to do this all in one motion, or you just want to do...
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Hey Pamela.
Hey Bill.
How long has Dolores, or who was the other party?
Brenda Spencer.
Yeah, how long, how many years have they been on that board?
Dolores has served numerous terms, and this is Brenda's second three-year term.
I have a question as well. Are in your bylaws, I don't know how y'all do things, but is there, are there term limits?
There, if reappointment, if they're interested, there are no term limits. The board does have to be 60% made up of older adults.
What do you consider old? I want to hear it. What do you consider old?
Technically 60 and older.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Not old, but mature.
Right, absolutely.
How many board members do you have?
There's 12 with a representative from Centralina, so 13.
Okay. Who's the rep from Centralina?
Lindsey Tyce.
She come from Charlotte?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
All right. What's your... I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion since you guys have recommended that they serve again. That, do you want to do it one at a time, or?
If you want to do it...
Do it one, okay. Dolores Chambers, to reappoint Dolores Chambers.
I have a motion to reappoint Ms. Dolores Chambers, that is, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Ms. Dolores passes 7-0. All right, what about the next one? Anyone?
Yeah. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Brenda Spencer to the board.
Okay, I have a motion to reappoint Brenda Spencer, second. Second Commissioner Lawhan, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose?
So you're saying there's going to be one more next, next meeting, or next month that we'll...
After their board meeting on the 12th.
Okay. So if you, if y'all...
This will be new appointments, not reappointments.
Okay. New appointments, so if y'all know anybody who wants to serve on the board, please have them fill out an application.
We do have applications for...
We do have applications on file.
You got to add.
I know, but I'm just saying that more people can, if you get more people that are interested, just have them fill that out.
Are we voting to replace Bill Rigsby tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, or no? No, we're not.
No, just doing the reappointments.
Oh, just the reappointments, I'm sorry.
Okay.
New appointments will be...
We will do that at our January 17, 16 meeting. Okay. All right, any questions? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Item number three is a public hearing for economic development incentive grant. Our presenter is Ms. Candace Lauer. How are you?
Doing well.
How's your dad?
Thank you for asking. He is improving. Thank you. Happy New Year. Come before you this evening on behalf of the Economic Development Commission to request support for an economic development grant totaling 75% of taxes on new investment for 10 years for a company that's considering locating a facility within the town of New London to manufacture home building components. This project will create approximately 263 high-quality jobs with salaries well above the county average and will result in new taxable investments of $54.5 million in real property and machinery equipment over the next five years. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the project and appreciate your consideration of this request.
Any questions for Ms. Lauer?
Ms. Lauer, I have some questions. I did call Mr. Lucas and talked with him about this, and I would just ask if you could just, for transparency for the public, could you discuss a little bit of the comprehensive analysis that you did with the, is it the Fed FIT kit? I'm not sure exactly what, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. We have a modeling tool that we use that is used by many EDOs to measure the economic impact of investment and jobs created by a project, and it takes into account new sales tax, new homes or renovations to existing homes, the multiplier effect of jobs that would be created by this project in terms of professional services and retail to support the jobs in the area. And all those hard numbers are plugged into a model, and then it produces an output to ensure that the community is not losing money in terms of its return on investment for the services that will be required to support those 263 jobs. Mr. Lucas actually runs the model for us, so there's some checks and balances in place, and if you, you know, I think he's prepared, I'm sure he's prepared to answer any questions you have specifically about the output, but we do that prior to approaching the board in closed session to ensure that the recommendation and the request is solid and good for the overall community.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I do have one, because some people think that it's hard to find employees this day in time, but, and it probably is, but, you know, there's always challenges in every business. But my question involves, we still have a large number of citizens that exit Stanley County every day to look for work, or to go to work elsewhere. Do you have any idea how many, what the number is now, most recent, that exit Stanley County to go to work elsewhere?
We have those numbers in-house. We track them periodically, but I don't have the most recent numbers, I apologize, but can get them for you, but to the labor force versus the number of available workers, you know, though we are a rural community, the area that employers, especially in the outlier areas, so the northernmost areas and westernmost areas, their recruitment area is much larger than the municipality or Stanley County. So when you draw the commuter rings around the municipalities and the locations where these projects are landing, you know, they have access to upwards of a million or more workers. And one of the things that makes our community attractive for manufacturing projects is we have a legacy of manufacturing here, you know, with textiles and Alcoa, 16% of our employment is in manufacturing, and that has held for several years, and it is our largest employment sector. Because of that, we have the workforce training programs to support our existing workers and new workers that come to the area, or multi-generations of workers that want to work in the same sector that their parents and grandparents worked in. So we have the infrastructure to support the manufacturing, the high-quality jobs that these projects are bringing.
Any more questions?
I do. Just clarification, so I know this is what, 263, 264 new jobs coming?
Mm-hmm.
And the average pay is $59,000?
Mm-hmm.
What is the current average pay for employees here in Stanley County, or people working in Stanley County?
Good question. Commerce released updated numbers in November, and as of November 2022, it's $41,612. I will add that just a year ago, the 2021 number was $38,466. So the old adage of a rising tide raises all ships is very true. Wages are tipping up, ticking up, and so is the quality of life and access to goods and services as these wages tick up.
All right, at this time I will open a public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against economic development incentive grant? You're here to see another one, I'll close the public hearing. It will be the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve economic incentive equal to 75% of new taxes for 10 years with a maximum, or yeah, minimum investment of $54,500,000, resulting in the creation of 263 new jobs.
Okay, have a motion, I have a second. Second Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? What? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion pass similar.
Thank you.
It's you down there, Commissioner.
Our next item, item number four, authorizing resolution for North Carolina Commerce Building Reuse Grant. Again, our presenter is Ms. Candace Lauer.
Thank you. In closing your meeting, Packet, you should have an authorizing resolution for Building Reuse Grant application from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for Project Frame. This resolution will authorize staff to execute all application and reporting documents that's required for this grant from Department of Commerce to support a building renovation associated with the project. For information, the building renovation involves a 227,700 square foot vacant facility. So we're thrilled that this vacant building is under consideration for this project. Be happy to answer any questions you have about the building reuse program or this project.
All right, any questions for Ms. Lauer?
Are you at liberty to discuss what the project is for?
This is connected to the previous project, and we are required by Department of Commerce to hold the company name confidential.
Right.
As we are under a confidentiality agreement with the company throughout the process. This is one step of many that we will be involved in, in order to land the project here.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that for transparency.
Sure.
Yes.
Anything else Commissioners? If not, what be the pleasure?
Move approval.
Have motion to approve, Commissioner Crump, second. Second Commissioner Barbie. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries similar.
Thank you.
All right, item number five, the EMS Community Paramedic Position Approval, and our presenter is Dale Chandler. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good, sir, how are you? Let me see if I can fight this computer and get it locked back in. Good evening, thank you for your time. I've come before you this evening to propose our fourth position to our community paramedic program. Currently the position, or previously the position was field until December 31st by the HERSA grant that expired then, but we've worked on an agreement to provide some sustainability for that position. A little bit about our community paramedic division, it's a team of full-time and reserve advanced practice paramedics. These guys and gals get 150-plus additional hours of education beyond what's required for a general paramedic, and basically they meet any of the needs and gaps that are met by the healthcare system as a whole. It originated in 2019 off of Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant to target the opioid crisis in North Carolina. Community paramedicine as a whole's been around for quite some time, but it generally focused on hospital discharges. We cornered the market on the opioid crisis and then ventured into the hospital discharge environment, because at the time we felt that the opioid crisis was our biggest concern, and that's where we needed to start our work. We did have a trial period over about a year with Atrium Health to provide data to them to see if this would be worth their while as an investment, and overall our trial period has reduced, or produced one of the lowest readmission rates in the region for community paramedicine as a whole. What hospital follow-ups are, basically when you're admitted to the hospital and discharged with a high-risk diagnosis, our community paramedics will go out, see you, do home visits, medication reconciliations, things like that, and their sole goal is, one, to promote your healing, and, two, to keep you out of the hospital in the future for that same diagnosis. Of course, it was the original purpose of community paramedicine when it started years ago, and the guys and gals that work in our division have perfected their craft. It's very simple. When they're admitted from the hospital, the referral comes through from any of the navigators at Atrium Cabarrus, and they call, schedule an appointment. Generally, we like to see the patient within 72 hours of discharge, most of the time it's within 24. The big thing about readmissions is there's some ramifications from that, it's very costly for the healthcare system, but more importantly, it's costly for the patients themselves. If they're readmitted within a 30-day timeframe for the same diagnosis, Medicare could deny both claims altogether, and they're set with a bill that they have to pay out of pocket. Some data from the year 2021, of course, the primary medical conditions that we follow up with are congestive heart failure, cardiovascular surgery, so if you have any kind of stamp placement or even open-heart surgery, we follow up with that, myocardial infarctions or heart attacks, we see COPD, pneumonia, stroke, and substance use disorder patients. Forthcoming, we should be seeing sepsis patients in the near future, but they're trying to work out some internal issues with Atrium for that. We had about 130 Atrium referrals in the year 2021. 97 of those patients were either agreeable to an appointment or weren't able, some weren't able to be contacted. We had about a 74% visit rate. Out of those 97 patients that were seen, only two were admitted, readmitted, but they were for different medical problems, and one was readmitted for the same discharge diagnosis. So we have a, basically a readmission rate of 1% in the year 2021. 2022's data is not complete yet, we have all the way up until October the 31st so far. It's a little bit of a lag in that data just because we have to get the data from Atrium Cabarrus, and of course you have that 30-day wait period. So, so far between January 1st and October 31st, there were 71 referrals to which we saw 66 of those, so our visit rate went from 74% to 93% in the last year, and a lot of that comes from the training that our field staff have gone under as far as how to make phone calls to these people and how to get them to understand what we do in a manner that's understandable to all the public. In the year 2022 so far, one patient was readmitted for the same medical condition and two were admitted for different medical conditions. We did enter a revenue contract with Atrium Cabarrus. Our community paramedics currently work the same 24/72 schedule as our 911 paramedics, so they're available that 24-hour timeframe for response to these calls. Kind of how our program initiated was with the two positions on a 12-hour shift model, we figured that these community paramedics needed to be available 24/7 because, you know, it, the problems don't stop at 7:00 PM, they go all 24 hours of the day. Those two initial positions were funded with that Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant. Now we have one position that is funded through opioid settlement funding, and after the Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant expired, the county picked up the bill for the first two. And so at this point, we're seeking approval for that fourth position that will basically be funded completely off of revenue from Atrium Health's referrals. In the grand scheme of things, it's actually a fairly low cost to the county from what our general operating budget is for EMS. Atrium Health has agreed to $510 per visit for each encounter with the community paramedic program. So basically at this point, we just request approval from the board for this fourth full-time community paramedic position that will solely be funded by Atrium Health revenues. And we actually did send out our first invoice today to Atrium Health for about half of December, and it totaled just north of $4,000, so it's marching out to about the same expectations for our revenues that we had planned on. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Any questions for Mr. Chandler?
I do, I have one.
Yes, sir.
The 510 they've agreed to pay, I'm sure there's other insurance patients that y'all do the same, what kind of pay do they, insurance companies pay?
So currently with the community paramedic program, some private health insurances will reimburse for these visits, but any kind of Medicare or Medicaid will not pay for this. It's, it's an evolving model with the federal government. There's some stuff coming down the pipe to where we'll able to be able to bill for these services, but currently, there's really no good stream for revenue for community paramedic visits without incurring a cost on the patients themselves, and at the end of the day, we're actually saving the hospital money, so we've gotten them to pony up a little bit of money to, to help us fund our program to save them money in the long run as well.
And this program has already started, correct?
Yes, sir. We've, we've been in operation with community paramedicine since 2019. We started doing some medical follow-ups in 2020, but it really shot off in 2021, so we're two solid years into the medical follow-up program for community paramedicine.
How long is the contract with Atrium?
It is good for two additional years, and we just renewed it last month, so it's, it's pretty much a renewable contract, but it is good until 2025, June of 2025.
I can't imagine this ever going away, because you're speaking my language, I'm a home health specialist, and so...
Absolutely.
I see these patients, especially if they're uninsured, they go home with no home health, and then no insurance is helping, but no, no one is out there, so I'm sure you get a lot of the people that are uninsured, and I think that's very commendable. And from what I understand, when we had talked this summer, this program is, is like a pilot program, you're training other people to do this because it's really caught fire, right?
Our opioid side is a, is a system model for the state of North Carolina. Mike Campbell, who's in the back of the room, is the, is the end-all-be-all for knowledge on this in the state, and they call him quite frequently to educate other EMS systems, and it's quite comical at administrators' conferences and things like that, the state medical director will actually pick him out of the room and say, hey, if you need an answer to this question, call Mike Campbell. So we're, we're very proud of his work there as well.
That's right.
I think the community paramedic program is one of the reasons, one of the big reasons why our opioid number went from, went number one in the state to not even registering in the...
We're not even registering in the top 10 for a year and a half now, roughly?
Yeah, it's been 16 months. That's a, that's a good thing. I'm certain that what proceedings is, or if you got a proceeding, the opioid versus the other issues to go.
Had you asked me this question two years ago, it probably would have been 75 to 80% of opioid patients, but now it's almost completely flip-flopped. We're seeing about 20% opioid patients, and now we're seeing about 80% of the, the medical follow-ups. So what, what these guys and gals are doing in the field is absolutely working.
Does, does Health and Human Services work with you on this stuff?
Yes. Mike goes to, to regular meetings with, with their department. With the HERSA grant, of course, they kind of dictated how our, our funding was, was spent, and, and he has a very good relationship with, with the ladies and, and the staff down there about getting what they need and, and reporting, because they have to report, you know, to the state just like we do, so it's a fairly good working relationship with our divisions.
Is it $510 per visit to that person, or is it per person for that incident?
So it's per person per that incident. So we're, typically, I think the most we've had to see a patient is three times.
Okay.
And generally, that is for lab draws. Once they've been referred, we have had a couple situations where there's been a lag in insurance picking up some home health coverages, and we've had to see them for a period of two weeks, about four times, but yeah, so if they're discharged for, say, a COPD admission, and they're sent home, we charge that first visit, if we have to see them twice more, you know, basically it's, it's on us. But if they go back into the hospital for a heart attack and they're discharged, then we send another bill for that patient because it's a different diagnosis.
And I'm guessing this lightens load for the emergency transports probably also?
Oh, it absolutely does. We've had several patients that they've got, they've gotten involved with repetitive 911 callers, and they've actually been able to divert them to other medical avenues versus calling an ambulance for everything in their daily, daily routines.
Yeah, and I just appreciate the opportunity coming out with you and the director and touring y'all's facilities, and I'll tell you, the folks in EMS, they do an amazing job, and they're really undervalued, I feel like, in the community, and by a lot of folks, I mean, they spend a quarter of their time, they work 24-hour shifts, and these folks, they deserve a lot of applause for what they do, and facilities they stay in, and we really need to look at doing some upkeep on some of these facilities in the near future. I know that's a different subject, but...
I would go up against any department, say that, that EMS has the best field staff.
Can I say one more thing? I just want to say, this takes a lot off of the, the home health nurses and the physical therapists that have to go out into the home as well, because everyone knows right now healthcare staffing is the biggest challenge we're all dealing with. You, you just can't find enough nurses and enough therapists to go out, and it seems like the numbers are, are just higher and higher. And so what, what is ideal is to have that professional to go into the home within 24 to 48 hours, and so if you're going to see that person one time and you get paid on it, then that gives the home health agencies an extra day or two to get their staffing caught up to get out to these patients, and, and there's such a need for that right now.
Absolutely.
More so over the last two years than ever.
It happens quite frequently, we get referrals almost daily that it's, it's going to be 72 to 96 hours before home health can actually make contact with that patient.
All right, board, what's the pleasure?
I'd like to move approval of the position to be funded from revenue generated off Atrium Health referrals.
I have a motion by Commissioner Crump, do I have a second? Second, Mr. King?
Second, Mr. King? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, send motion.
Thank you, sir.
Next item number six is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council appointment. And our presenter is Ms. Dolly Clayton. Good evening, Dolly, how are you?
Very good, Happy New Year. So I am the chair of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. And they asked me to come today to provide you with our recommendation for one of our vacancies on our board or our council. We basically have 26 positions on our council. And so it's a large group. And most of these positions are specifically designated for specific roles. And so they have to somehow fit that role. So like a faith community member, individual representing children who are at risk or juveniles at risk, juvenile defense attorney, and so on and so forth. And so the name that I put for you in your packet today is Ms. Shawana Long. And she is currently representative. She came to our last meeting that we had in December and expressed her interest in serving on our council. And she currently lives in Albemarle and is an educator with Montgomery County Schools.
Yeah, I recognized her name and I looked back. ESS and the Health Department Board.
Consolidated Human Services Board.
Consolidated Board, they actually recommended for her to be appointed on that board, which we did not do. And this is the second time that she's been, she's been recommended by, this is a different, you know, for a position. And I think you sent out invitations to a lot of people to come by to talk to y'all. And she's the only one that came by.
Correct. This past time, we currently have four applicants in the pool for the JCPC of those. One only got their application at the end of December, December 30th. But the other three were invited to the December meeting. And she's the only one who responded and indicated interest. At the previous meeting, I had invited like 10 people and four of those showed up. And those four were recommended at the previous, at a previous board meeting. And you guys did appoint those four for those selected positions. And so she's the only one that indicated that she was interested and showed up and expressed her interest and why it was important to her to serve. And so therefore, the, the council recommended her to be considered for appointment.
Based on that, I'd like to nominate Shawana Long to go on the board.
Okay, I have a motion for Commissioner Shuto. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Hatley. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, send motion. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Very good, thank you so much.
Our next item, February 8th, Strategic Planning Retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the past 14 years, the board has held a strategic planning retreat, usually a local one-day retreat for the board to look at the current fiscal year and set priorities for the next fiscal year and beyond. It's recommended that the board hold this retreat again. And three potential dates have been proposed. February 3rd, February 10th, and February 17th. And so the action we're requesting is to consider and approve holding a one-day retreat at a location to be determined and consider a date for that retreat.
All right, commissioners?
I gotta work all three days, but I'll take off work and make it, make happen any of those because there's not many February days off.
That's true.
17th is not good for me.
3rd's best for me.
3rd works for me.
I can do 3rd.
3rd? All right, where are you 3rd?
Where are we 3rd is this? All right. June Berry is where we've reached out to. We've had it there the last couple of years. It's been, you know, the, I think the board has been okay with that location. It's a little easier for staff because they provide the food and do all that stuff. And we don't have to, you know, logistically get it there and, you know, and, and do that. So that's, that's worked out well in the past if the board's okay with using that facility again. You know, it's, it's, it's
Can we get a moderator? Can we get a moderator?
That's your call. Andrea Stevenson, who we've used in the past, is not available. So it would be somebody other than her.
On any of those dates?
She's not available at all. She, the earliest she's available is May, which we're not wait, we can't wait till May.
I think it's best to have a moderator. Or a, I'm sorry, it might be called a facilitator.
I mean, we can find a facilitator, you know, and other options if that's the board's preference. We had somebody last year, I mean, that really didn't do a whole lot of moderation because she had to fill in because Andy got COVID right at the last minute and couldn't come. So, you know, she really wasn't
Yeah, she, she, yeah, she just every once in a while moved us along.
She did, she did. And we, and I, I don't mind reaching back out to her again. I mean, she was very affordable.
If we get somebody like, like, and, like, yeah, we get someone else.
Okay, we can, we can take a look at that.
All right. Anything else? All right, where are you 3rd?
What's that? As long as they're good with that, I don't know if we need a motion. I don't, I mean, I'm, it's not a
Need a motion?
You can get a motion. I mean, if that's, yeah, that's fine. That way it's set in stone.
I'll make a motion that we have our planning retreat at June Berry Ridge on February 3rd.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Just, just discussion. Do you know if June Berry Ridge is available on that date?
Yeah, it was. I, there was initially, there was other date that I had in here. I had to take that one out because it wasn't avail, the, the facility was not available. So
Yeah, so I was just wondering if we could just take out the, if maybe you could amend and just take out June Berry Ridge since we're voting on it in case something happens and they don't become available. Because if we make a motion, we almost got to vote again if it moves to someone else, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you just want to set the date, it's February 3rd. We'll find the venue because, you know, you can always
I'll make my motion to have it on February 3rd wherever we can have it.
That's fine, all right.
Second.
Have motion, say any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
We'll say we will do it in Stanley County. We're, we're not traveling off somewhere like some municipalities and counties do. We'll spend our money here locally.
All right, next item number nine is our budget calendar. Our presenter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This basically is the, the calendar that we use to formalize the dates for our budget process. And we just need the board to review and consider and approve this calendar. There is a yellow sort of block for joint meetings with the school board and the community college board trustees. And I realize we'll have some committee meetings with the school board, you know, beyond that. But this would actually just be a full board meeting with their full board. It'll be sometime in March or April. And we would do that both with the community college and with the school board. And we, we just haven't pinned down the exact dates on those. But that would be sometime in March or April for those specific dates. But just ask the board to review and consider approval of this calendar. And this will get our process really. We've already been financing myself. We've already been doing some things behind the scenes to get, get everything ready. Doing projections and other things to get, to begin the process. But this will formalize it.
Thanks, sir. It was a pleasure with the board. I have a motion to adopt the budget calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Crump. Need more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, send motion. Our next item is the county manager's salary.
Merit, merit, merit. Yeah, you, you all, sorry, Mr. Chairman. I didn't know if you were taking the lead on that or I can't. You know, obviously, annually, you all make a decision on whether or not to include the county manager in the employee merit process. And so that's before you this evening to make a decision. In years past, you've given, you've given me the, you know, the max that could be awarded to employees. In this year, there's a, the, I think the, the board had had some discussion in closed session around doing the, the average of what county employees got for an increase, which was 3.95%.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award county manager Lucas the 3.9% merit increase.
3.9 or 3.95?
3.95, whatever the max is.
I have a second with Vice Chairman Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thanks, sir. Item number 10 is the consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shuto. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner King. Hold on, I'm writing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Board closing comments and committee reports. I'm going to start with Commissioner King.
I just want to say that I had a chance to tour our EMS facilities. And a couple of them had some things that need to really be focused on repairing. And I'd like to see that get underway pretty soon, especially the northern zone. It had some mold on the ceiling there that we took a look at. And, you know, the one down south, it's just really aged and it needs some updating. These folks, I mean, like I said, they spend 20, 25% of their life there. And I don't think it's too much to ask that we upgrade these facilities for them. They do an outstanding job for us. And I think we need to make sure they know how appreciated they are. And we need to do a better job doing that. Went on the library board and I went and toured our library in Albemarle. And the new director, Sarah Hahn, she's doing great things there. And I believe that she'll continue on making the library better every day. And we've got some things that we want to work on there. So look forward to bringing that to the board soon. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Shuto?
As we've set goals for the year, I've set my goals. I try sharing them with people. That way it helps keep me accountable to follow them. And as accounting commissioner, here's the goals I've set for this year. One is to attend at least one council meeting of all the 10 municipalities in Stanley County throughout the year. The second one was schedule workdays in the six department, different county departments, and start with at least six this year. The airport, sheriff's office, health department, 911 center, transportation SCUSA, Aggrega Civic Center. It'll probably be like eight to 10 because I've had people send me requests, which sounded pretty cool. I did work, New Year's Eve, Kyle sent me an email right after I sent an email out. And he said, hey, New Year's Eve, come on down to the, come on down to 911. It gets pretty interesting on New Year's Eve. It was actually pretty, you know, I've been down there. But, but working the shift with them, I worked from 9:00 to 1:00 AM. And it's, I'm going to write a thing about it. But basically, man, it's like being in a video arcade because the lights are low, all these multicolor screens. And there's all these bings and bongs and noises and this. And you got the headphones on where you hear this conversation and you're listening to the Charlotte, you know, stuff there. And then what was awesome about is that how, how that team works down there together. Because I'll be on a call, listening to a call, and there'll be another one, you know, the she's, they're talking to the, to the person that called. And then someone else is talking to the, you guys to get help out there to the people. I mean, it's really, really interesting. And there's just a lot to do down there. But it's in, you know, so that was, that was a very good experience. And then, oops. Then also, I want to oh, I want to visit all branches of the library just to pop in and say hi to them and just see what they're doing. And I want to gather support to include the Stanley County Parks and Recreation Grant Program into our budget. I hope I can get support for that this year. We did it two years ago and it was very, very successful. And hopefully, we can get that implemented again. And then work to have at least three productive meetings of our three facilities committee members with the Board of Education's facility committee members to have serious discussions about improving the school facilities throughout this Stanley County. And you know what? And I'm not talking about closing schools or consolidating schools. I'm just saying we need to get the, get these schools up to standards. If we have to tear them down and build new ones, we need to find the money to do that. If we have to consolidate them, we need to consolidate them. I mean, things, things change. We just can't continue to just live in the past because a lot of people coming into Stanley County, you know, their grandkid, their grandma, granddad, great-granddad didn't go to the, that school. And we need to have safe schools and they need to be upgraded. That's just, that's me. And I hope we can get some good questions to get, to get these facilities up. And then finally, work with other commissioners to get a final decision on whether or not we're going to provide funding to proceed with the Stanley County Life Stock Arena project. I think he's working on, they're working on a price for us there. And like Mike, I think we need to either bite the bullet or let it go, you know? Where at that point, we've had so much discussion about that over the last, I think it started around 2012 or 13. And the prices have gone nothing but up. So that's my goals for moving forward. And I'd love to have one, but at some point, if we're not going to build it, we got to just let it, let it go.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Crump?
Well, I have to say that I'm very optimistic about Candace's presentation today. That makes me very excited. I'm conservatively excited. And I'm very glad, too, that we're going to be able to hopefully put to use a building that's been sitting there vacantly because there's nothing sadder than to drive by a big manufacturing facility that was once hustling and bustling. And now it's just dead. And nobody wants to see that. And so it's very personal to me because my dad has always been in textile management. And so, you know, when you go through that one part of Albemarle and you see Snyder's and you see Allison's and you see all of that. And it's just not what it used to be. So it is great to think that we're going to be bringing some life back into a building that's sitting there. So I also just want to thank again the, the EMS. Thank you for what you're doing with this community paramedic program. I know you do so many things. But I, I just loved reading all the way through the materials that you provided. I definitely see the value in what you're doing. And whenever it's our own parents or our friends or it's our family who is needing someone at their door 24 hours to 48 hours after they come out from a scary hospital admission, it's very, very important. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hatley?
Get my phone back on and give it to you. No, no, Trent and I, Trent and I, I'm going to use, we attended the Airport Authority meeting in December. And then just this week, I received the annual operating report. And I'd never known these numbers, never asked for them, but pretty interesting. Total operations at the Stanley County Airport 2022, 22,907. Of that number, 10,670 were landings. 11,218 were takeoffs, which means they, some of those went elsewhere because they weren't into 10,670. There were 631 go-arounds. And I'm not real sure what a go-around is, but I'm going to find out. And then there were 388 over flights. Maybe they just flew over to the airport, I don't know. We'll find out and let you know. Back during the spring, the airport, along with Stanley County, had a very bad windstorm. And when they had it, there was a hangar, a T-hanger out there that had damages done to it. The report was, we received the money from, from the insurance company and the repairs have been done. There's also two companies that are considering a land lease out there
Commissioner Hatley, I attended the Soil and Water Authority meeting last week and listened to their problems that they've got, and we've got a bunch of old outdated water meters out there that's going to have to be replaced, and you are better and more efficient with, I guess, and then also discussed some waterline projects that are ongoing, and things are looking pretty well for that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple things. Ms. Bennett, it is my pleasure to see you here. I hope you're enjoying your retirement, but I always miss your, miss your presentations, and it's great seeing you again. January the 14th, I think, is the Martin Luther King Day event at E.E. Waddell. I know we got an email today, so we need to let Tyler know if we can, if you're willing to go to that event. They've had those every year. And just want to wish everyone out there a Happy New Year. Again, I appreciate what you do. I'm excited about 2023 on the opportunities that we have as commissioners and the things we can get done. I look forward to our budget retreat and our workshop. That's always an exciting time just to set our priorities in order on what we need to do here in the county. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January the 17th, causing the Martin Luther King holiday. And if nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank y'all.